You got lucky and they now live on Maui. Oh, it's really wonderful. A 65-year-old man.
Mrs. Brancato?
Here.
Mrs. Carlson?
Present.
Mr. Gindhart?
Here.
Mr. Godikson?
Present.
Mr. Hartline?
Present.
Mrs. Lynch?
Come back to her.
Dr. McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Sadowski?
Here.
Mrs. Lynch, can you hear me?
Can you see her?
I do see her.
Mrs. Lynch, unmute yourself.
Yeah, she does have her mute button on.
She muted?
Mm-hmm.
Whose phone is that? Can we come back to that? She's there.
Yeah.
Okay.
He can hear you on the speaker.
I'm okay. Did they, did they roll call?
Yes, just say here.
Mrs. Lynch, say here. She did?
Yeah, what you mean here, here, I heard you on your phone. That's all right.
Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public, to the stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Announcements, I only have one announcement. It's personal, so today is my oldest son's birthday and this is the only time he's gonna see me, so happy birthday CJ. That makes me old, really old. Presentations.
Up, executive session.
Sorry, I'm sorry, we had an executive session before this concerning employment issue, employee issues. Announcements, presentation, student presentation, Quinn Cataldi, are you here? Are you gonna do both?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm gonna quickly go over the last month's events and then we have upcoming this month at Tenet. So, on March 12th, the Key Club held their annual blood drive, which was a rousing success. The following night, we, the English department held their open mic night, which was also, went very well. Hoops for Harmony, three for three, basketball tournament was won by Luke Torock, Will Palicio, and Danny Fox. The Spring Musical, Ma'amiya, was also a huge success. The College Fair on three, on March 20th went very well with over 55 colleges and universities being present. The Student Government Dinner for those who serve went very well with 55 deserving CSD employees getting a great dinner that night. Junior Prom was this previous Saturday, April 4th, which went very well with the theme being Enchanted Forest. Upcoming, FBLA has 27 members who qualified to compete at the state competition in Hershey, which is actively ongoing, which is where our student gov president currently is, which is why I'm filling in for him. This upcoming Saturday, April 12th, is the William Tenet Science Day. And this upcoming week, Panther Pathways has their interviews for all English students in that class. The instrumental spring concert will be held on April 24th. The Film Festival will be on April 30th. The annual Ken Montgomery Track Meet is on May 1st this year. The senior wall reception for all of our senior art students will be held also on May 1st, with the CSD Art Showcase at William Tenet High School being the following night, which is May 2nd. And then the Spring Choral Concert will be on the 8th of May. On May 30th, the Mr. Tenet Competition will be held at William Tenet High School with the 2025 candidates being Sam Carden, Declan Cashman, Alexis Castro Luna, Brennan Corcoran, Danny Fox, Mike Lipowski, Nicholas Mento, Luke Torock, Matt Wigner, and Tristan Ziegler. That is all for the Tenet update, MBIT, the current happenings, the National Technical Honor Society, honor students, achievement in leadership and career in technical education. A record-breaking 65 MBIT students will be inducted in a ceremony held on Tuesday, April 29th, in our cafeteria. MBIT automotive student Matthew Hood and Matthew Lavesky claimed first place at the 32nd Annual Greater Philadelphia Auto Technological Competition, hosted by the Auto Dealers Association of Greater Philadelphia on March 7th, under the guidance of instructor Rob Schwartz and sponsored by Keystone Volvo Cars of Doylestown. The duo outperformed 24 area high school seniors in a hands-on technician skills challenge. Their impressive victory earned them more than $290,000 in scholarships and prizes collectively, highlighting their exceptional automotive skills and dedication to their craft. Congratulations to both Matthews on this outstanding achievement. Next, congratulations to all Skills USA competitors, students from various technical schools throughout Pennsylvania, including MBIT students. Competed in the 2025 Skills USA State Competition, held in Hershey. Seven students won gold, three students won silver, and six won bronze. The seven gold medal winners will advance to the National Skills USA Leadership and Skills Conference in Atlanta in June. Finally, congratulations to Kaya Crawley, a talented senior in the Multimedia Technology Program, who has been named the 2025 Skills USA Pennsylvania Outstanding Student of the Year. Kaya earned this prestigious honor at the Skills USA PA State Leadership and Skills Conference, standing out among students across the Commonwealth. Her creativity, leadership, and unwavering dedication to her craft have made a lasting impact, and the statewide recognition is a testament to her hard work and passion. That is all. Thank you, Quinn.
Dr. Bennett?
Dr. Bennett?
Good evening, board members. First, we'd like to share that this past Friday, as you may recall, the district was very fortunate to be selected to host a 2025 AI Symposium that had a number of superintendents that were traveled down from the central area, intermediate unit, which is in the Harrisburg area, and then surrounding jurisdictions with Montgomery County, Bucks County, Chester County, and so on. We ended up with, even as far as ways, New Jersey. Some people came over to learn about the work that we've been doing with implementation of AI in our schools to support teaching and learning, as well as operational efficiency and effectiveness. We have our first snippet of a highlight that we'd like to share with you that was created by our new communications and marketing specialist, so if you could show the short video, please.
Hello and welcome to the Centennial School District. My name is Anthony Gabriel. I am an assistant superintendent for Academic Systems Services.
And I'm Kristen Herman, the Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning.
We'd like to welcome everybody to our April 2025 AI Symposium.
We're thrilled to offer sessions today on AI for teaching, AI for students, AI for equity, AI for data-driven decision-making, and AI for community engagement. We're also gonna hear from a panel of our very own Centennial students on how they're currently using AI in both their personal and academic lives. And we have two lightning talks, one from our very own superintendent, Dr. Dana Bennett, and one from the CEO and President of Nothing But Education, Wanda Brill.
I use Jibon. I use ChatGPT. I use my best friend, Call. And they can tell, Call also tempts me. You can stand and laugh when I see an email.
I also use it, I'll be in my math class, I'll be listening to what my teachers say. Sometimes it's like the first day that she's teaching something, I'm like, I just do not understand it, explain it. I'll ask her for help, still don't understand it. I'll then like ask AI to like show me like one of our problems, like every, like step by step on how to deal with it. And then it doesn't always show me like the answer, like, oh, like kinda how this is wrong. And so like, once I see like the system of like how to use it, I'm more like able to solve the problem.
So I also use AI sometimes to check my work, like when I have writing assignments or I have math problems, I just need to check my work before I turn it in. And it never does the work for me, and I am getting answers from AI, I'm not going to lie, I am getting answers from AI, but I just, I do the work first and then I check, and then I use what it's giving me and try to work out anything that I want.
Um, I think, and all of my teachers have like different expectations for it, and I feel being here, they always tell you like your expectations of how they want you to use it. Some teachers, it's more of a case-by-case situation. Some assignments that is more required on, and some assignments, uh, they want you to implement AI.
Well, I always try to work things out for my parents and for my students. I try to work it out myself first, and then I try to go to my teacher, and then I go to AI, because for me, AI is kind of a lost reward. Like, I normally do not use AI.
Give AI the right thoughts, if you like, be more of a tutor, so I can answer. So, you know, be dependent on AI, you just have to know the right things to say to it, and that just give you the answer.
So I wanna thank Christopher, who just has only been with us for a week and, what, two days, for his work in capturing that. Mr. Gabriel and Officer Teaching and Learning were the contact. Anthony, if you wanna give context of why we were selected, because it's a pretty big deal, when they say that no one is doing what we're doing.
Good to see everybody. The Capital Area Intermediate Unit had reached out to, was looking for AI in action. They were on a three-day professional development stretch this week in the area, working with different outfits on how to leverage AI in schools, and wanted to see a district in action at all three levels. And so, folks knew that we were doing it and reached out, and we said, no problem. And so, we were able to meet with, I think, about 18 superintendents from the Capital Area showed up, some IU folks, and then as Dr. Bennett mentioned, superintendents, directors, supervisors, coordinators, instructional coaches, folks from national nonprofits and research facilities from ISME also came as well. So, it's a nice day, nice morning, got a lot of great feedback, our teachers did a great job, our students did a phenomenal job, and so it was a nice way to showcase the work that we're doing moving forward.
We also have the opportunity to recognize one of our own, if Mr. Creighton and Dr. Kara Kappa could come up. This past year, annually, the PIAA selects a Athletic Director of the Year. They select by region, and then they go on to select the statewide Athletic Director of the Year. I am happy to share that this past year, our very own John Creighton, who's one of the many, but not everyone, who is a certified athletic administrator, was selected as the Region One Athletic Director of the Year. And we wanna take his opportunity to celebrate and again congratulate our very own, Dr. Creighton, I mean, Dr. Kara Kappa. Dr. Kara Kappa?
I didn't know you owned a tie joke.
You got on the wrong side. I'll turn on Dr. Kara Kappa if he has anything to share, any words?
Thank you, Dr. Bennett, good evening, everyone. It's just an honor that this is bestowed on us as an organization. One of the things that I think gets overlooked is the hours that an athletic director sometimes puts in. They don't realize he comes in very early, and then is here probably the last one to leave the building on certain nights. So when you have somebody as dedicated as John in an organization like ours, it's really something to behold, and we're glad that the state finally recognized his good work. So congratulations, John.
So this is gonna be one of the harder thank yous, because typically when I get up here, I'm recognizing our wonderful student athletes, and that's my job. My job is for the kids, it's not about me, it never will be. But I am honored and humbled to be named this, this year. But the recognition does reflect the incredible people that I'm fortunate to work with on a daily basis, including the school board, our district administrators, our building administration. But there are a few I would like to thank, because again, as a team, we try to put out our best effort for our students. So, to Gary Bissequino, Joe Pitzak, and Tracy Fiore, that's thank you for the pride that they take in preparing our facilities every single day. Our coaches, our security team, administrators, support staff, the dedication behind the scenes is what makes our department run. And then, of course, most importantly, and I'm sure you've heard me say their names multiple times when I'm here, Jocelyn Poole, Paul Veltre, and my incredible assistant, Kimberly Slonenko, who is still driving home today. She drives two hours to and from work each day. So this award is for us, not for me. Together, we make William Tenet a special place, and I'm very proud to be part of this team. Thank you.
I'm sure this will prize up into some bigger trophies and flags that you normally get, but congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mrs. Rich, can you take a picture?
Have to get my good side. I don't know which side that is, but...
I'll figure it out.
Which one you want?
That's good. The bunny ears? Okay, I'll do one more.
I gotta do one with the bunny ears.
He had, he had two great role models at home. Mr. Creighton? Mr. Creighton? What did your parents do for a living?
Uh, so, well, I've been over 40 years in the schools of Philadelphia. Father retired, Frank Revice was an athletic director. My mother was head of the public, is at, um, at 440.
Two great role models to follow.
And that bio is all about them, it's not about me.
Congratulations to your mom and dad, too.
Yep.
And I'll just echo Dr. Kara Kappa's comments with this comment. Oftentimes, I remind the board, you usually only receive a phone call, unfortunately, when something's not right. A field is not the way someone wants it, or a fence is not the way it should be. But if you think about it, the number of teams, and the number of athletes, and the number of people behind the scenes involved, I always want you to remember going forward, how many people you didn't hear from, which means that's how many things that were going well in his life. Things will happen, and I'm glad John mentioned those people in the beginning who work on the fields and those other types of things. One of the things that we are really, I'm scared about for all school districts, especially this district, is, and I think this is something that even because of her previous comments she's made to me, Ms. Brancalo can relate to, we have talented craftsmen in our district, but they're aging out, and they're retiring. Well deserved, but that skill set is becoming a lost art. You'd be amazed at how many things that we've had repaired or done in-house that we didn't have to hire someone to come in from the outside that has saved us many, 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 many hours and a lot of dollars. So, I appreciate John saying and recognizing the team that has been a part of the process. So the award that he has received is well deserved for him, but it's also the athletes and the people also wrapped around the whole program. So congratulations to you and congratulations to them, thank you very much. And finally, I'd like to close out, as you have on your agenda tonight, an opportunity to make a decision about something that has been a challenge for the high school principal this past year, if you could bring up the presentation. Earlier this year, we had an incident that happened, and I say that word not to be fresh, using my person-to-the-right verbiage, but to be real, because even the police chief referred to it as an incident. But what it also revealed... Um but what it also revealed is a request for help by our high school. Um and we uncovered something in that process, which was while we're looking at a larger system that has much more conversation that needs to be have, a lot more expense associated with it, we have an opportunity to address an everyday issue that they're dealing with. And so the request, as you know, came about the Smart Pass system, which is an opportunity for us to enhance the school culture, climate and safety that we continue to work on all the time in the high school. And what I've asked, uh what I've done here is tried to give you a comprehensive overview because it was embedded in a larger presentation that I think may have gotten lost. That is cost, you'll see, not a significant cost, but could have significant benefits to the school. Uh that Smart Pass is a digital hall pass system that helps with student accountability and in this conversation will highlight how we can improve our efforts, continued efforts around school safety, maximizing our instructional time and enhancing student responsibility. Uh next slide, please. Um I lost my track here. This journey on improving school safety since I've been here has been one that we have made several significant improvements around security staffing in our in our organization and I'm not going to read that whole list. Uh the other big area we worked on was the physical security enhancements that have been well over a million dollars that we have invested since I've been superintendent here. Uh mental health support has had over three hundred thousand dollar uh increase in resources and then we've expanded our partnerships and monitoring with our partnerships with the police department and improved MOU with them. And by the way, I always want to give them a shout out. The best time to get a ticket, but the worst time for us is a school district. If something's happening in the school and if you're pulled over to get a ticket, you'll probably get out a ticket. I say that because Warminster and Southampton Police Department treat our schools as sacred grounds. If something is going on at school, anticipated, believed, even if it's not true, they drop what they're doing and come to take care of our schools without a shadow and they don't get into jurisdictional concerns. It is whoever is closest to the school, they get there to take care of our children and our school grounds. So I always want to recognize them for that. We often have a collaborative conversation that entails sometimes details that they don't necessarily share with other people because of the trust that has been developed over the years between the school district personnel and our uh police departments. Uh they even participated as we grew our program with the development of the staffing and even the selection of of Kevin, uh Mr. Burns, who's now with us, they were a part of that selection process. Next slide. The bigger thing that I want to highlight here is ask everyone to make sure that they understand what it is that we're talking about and the high school has been asking for and what the digital hall pass system is. And the most important part is that it's it's a significant evolution from a traditional paper hall pass to a comprehensive digital accountability system. Uh it's a platform base that allows the school to manage school traffic and movement throughout the building, which eighteen or almost eighteen hundred people, students, excuse me, and then you add another two hundred staff, a five thousand, five hundred thousand square foot facility. That's bigger than some townships that we're trying to supervise and man. And the key components of that system are the digital hall pass creation and approval interface, the real time movement, uh tracking capabilities, meaning that if you sign out and you're supposed to be somewhere else, it'll show up in a database where you signed out from and where you're supposed to be. Uh integration with student information system, so it will integrate with our Skyward system. Uh it is administrative dashboard with a comprehensive analytics that they can do evaluation and assessment and ability to support emergency lockdown and security features. What is not on this slide that I will mention to you is that it is a Pennsylvania based, locally developed school district uh product. Methaclean, two students with their assistant principal in Methaclean School District developed this system. So it is homegrown locally in our state. But here's the thing, how do you pay for it? It's paid for. Uh the good news is this system will run us a total of twenty eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for three years total, meaning the annual cost is nine thousand, four hundred and seventy seven dollars. But here's what's astonishing that we've been experiencing this past year that has created the cry for help from the high school and their constant asking me for assistance. Over the course of this past year, we have experienced twenty seven thousand dollars worth of work and damage in our bathrooms at the high school. Labor hours of five hundred hours totaling over twenty one thousand, repair parts and materials over six thousand and Mr. Dr. Wilson and myself have had to expend an inordinate amount of time that's not in this of our time, sitting in discipline and potential expulsion hearings associated with bathroom issues and vaping that are illegal in schools. And even to the extent that students have had, the volume of them that they've had rise to the level of concern for distribution. We've also uncovered, even in this building, which we run a school in this building, stuff being stuffed in the ceiling tiles to try to hide it from us. It offers student accountability and responsibility, a digital way to request a hall pass, to log the time that a student is out of class and the time they came back, builds a history and it helps us to work with our students to develop responsibility about managing your time, which also is a lifelong skill set for when you get a job that we want them to develop also. It also helps us maximize instructional time. I think the biggest part that I like, excuse me, next slide. Next slide. Is anyone moving the slides back? Next slide. Next one. Thank you. Uh the instructional time piece, it is something that's going to help us maximize instructional time and I'd ask you to focus on the middle part. I'm not going to read it all to you, but you can see the difference between the traditional hall pass system and the smart hall pass system that we're talking about putting in place. The students can request passes through their devices, we're one to one, so it works on our Chromebooks without disrupting the class. The teachers can approve or deny with minimal interruption to the instructional time. They've also been able to log information that shows that active traffic has decreased in hallways and the length of time that students are spending in the bathroom has gone down. Next slide. Here's where the rubber meets the road also on the student behavior and school climate side. Uh we talked about the bathroom vandalism issue that we're experiencing and schools implementing the smart halls pass have reported significant decreases in bathroom vandalism. The vaping prevention, it becomes a tool to help us tackle that. And by the way, if you remember, we were one of the the joining districts that have sued over the vaping issue because of the detriments to our students. In fact, we received several checks for that lawsuit that we filed. And also unauthorized gatherings, we have issues with students who are planning their gatherings using their devices and plan meetings. Next slide. It will support our hands, our school safety and emergency preparedness. It supports our instant emergency lockdown system. The bigger part is if we go into what we really call now secure or is one version, if that goes into effect, administration can actually log in and see if there were students who already were just released to go to the bathroom or the hallway somewhere, they can now look and say, okay, teacher says I got twenty-two out of my twenty-four students. They can log in and say, oh, the other two were allowed to go to the nurse or to here. So we can actually go see if they're there and make sure we can account for every student in our building at that time. Account of prevention, we do have what we call no contact uh measures that we put in when students are having conflict, encouraging them not to interact with each other until they get past whatever issue they're having. Uh part of that is done right now by request from students and I've sat in meetings at the high school where students don't always honor that. This system will allow us to put that information in the system. Dr. McGuire and I are having a bad day. Dr. McGuire and I have a no contact uh measure put in place. Dr. McGuire asked to go to the restroom, but I'm already in the restroom. When she logs into the system to go and asks to go to the bathroom, but if I'm already out there, it'll send an alert to the teacher to not approve it, to keep her from going to the bathroom until I return to the bathroom. Uh and it creates a digital record. Uh oftentimes when we're trying to understand if there's a pattern with certain students in being out from class. And it is really part of data driven insights for educational leadership. Uh the data point, for example, frequent health room visits and Dr. McGuire, not picking you, but since you're the nurse, you can appreciate this one, that if you see there's a pattern of going to the bathroom and there could be something medical there, that information and a nurse could actually decide, hey, I need to look into this and have a conversation. If there is a pattern of bathroom visit during specific class time, through years as a former teacher, sometimes students have anxiety or they try to avoid certain things in class. So you start seeing a pattern of they're trying to avoid certain things. So it gives you data driven decision that you can help support instructional program as well as manage potential health issues that are being not necessarily reported, but it give you an aha that someone needs to check in on that student to see if something's going on. Uh I mentioned the implementation, next slide for our uh system. There is no issue with implementing and communicating our system, but here's the best part. This system has been bought by Raptor. Raptor is our entry check-in for visitors. They hope down the road that this system will be integrated with that system and it may actually address the other issue that you're still struggling with and they may be able to be connected. No guarantees, but that is the potential that they're working with. They're going to try to make these systems integrate with each other. So it could be a solution to the other problem that has not been resolved at this time. And again, start with how do you pay for it? End with how do you pay for it and where's the money coming from? Well, to help the high school out, in one of the positions that reports to my office was vacant for four months and as I shared with one of your colleagues, we couldn't find the right person, so I don't believe in filling a job just to put a warm body in it to get work done. We had to wait for the right person. So we had four months of that job being vacant. So Mr. Greenwood, I said, well, what does that equate to with salary and benefits? It equated to twenty eight thousand dollars, ladies and gentlemen. So we have twenty eight thousand dollars from that vacant position that we work with without that could actually fund this and it'd cover the entire three years and buys the high school time. And I did meet with the high school principal who said, I know that I have to own this because our budget challenges, but at least you got me going for three years and I can plan for it. And I'm going to, this is online, I'm not going to go to the rest of the the other embellished stuff, uh but Mr. Burns attended a regional police meeting. Can you share what came up at that meeting, Mr. Burns? Which is other reason this came back to me because it was a system recommended by him during that same time, but lo and behold, he was at a regional police meeting and it came up. And then Dr. Care Capa, if you could share the information you had about who else is using it, so because that was a question board members asked, as well as you can speak to that, Mr. Burns.
So uh I'm a member of the Bucks County Police Chiefs Association and within that association, there's a school safety and security committee. I was appointed to that committee by the president of the organization. We met in the sheriff's office with Sheriff Harren, uh Chief Dickinson from Pen Ridge Regional and that's actually where the information came from because we were discussing vaping because it's a problem not just for us, everywhere, right? And we were discussing, you know, possible legislative remedies to some of these vaping issues and things like that. And one of them said, well, we put in one of those electronic hall pass systems and it seems to have cut down considerably on the vaping issue. A lot of times they, the students will meet up to do this, it's like a little party kind of thing. And then with this system, when we know that students are doing that, we can clearly prevent that from happening. So the information that came from Pen Ridge Regional Police Department is where that information came from.
And the three thousand student Pen Ridge High School is using it, I understand.
Yes, yes, they're using a version of. But uh my wife is an educator, my daughter is a speech pathologist, they both work in separate districts in the county. Um and both of their districts use Smart Pass. My wife is a special needs teacher and she's talked about how effective it is in keeping kids where they need to be and figuring out where they are when you need to figure that out. So if anybody has any questions, I'll I'll take them now.
Dr. Care, Dr. Care Capa. Officer Burns, I I do have a quick question for you.
Go ahead.
So looking at, as Dr. Bennett said, the size of the building, the student population, I'm sure that your security officers have their hands full all the time. So it looks to me like this could actually be like a force multiplier for them in a way, right?
Absolutely can, absolutely.
If you could address that, just so people know what I'm talking about.
So the uh the recommended number of security personnel for any building that size is one security officer for every two hundred and fifty people. We we can't do that. That's a lot of people. Uh so this would help with being able to track problem students, with being able to um track their whereabouts and and keep some of this stuff separated so we don't have to deal with it as often, basically, a force multiplier, as Mr. Ginhardt said.
Question from my side here is, so you're checking out of one classroom, do you have to check in in order to get to the bathroom?
Check into the bathroom?
Yes.
No.
So have we really done anything different than what we did with the paper?
We can set time limits on these, but there can be like a ten minute or five minute, eight minute time limit, whatever we want to do. Um and I believe like the the general average that they're using is ten minutes and if the student's not back in the classroom in ten minutes, then the teacher should be notifying us.
Additionally, it builds a data history record of a pattern of how long you've been gone or not because when you come back, you sign back into the classroom. Right now, that doesn't happen in a hall, in a paper pass system. Additionally, if I sign out and say I'm supposed to be in the bathroom, but I'm in the cafeteria, they can bring up on their handheld device when they see a student and say, but you're you're on a pass to the bathroom, why are you in the cafeteria?
Can I ask a question? So at any given time, if say there's an emergency, something happens in the in the school, the teacher can look and say, this this student, this student is out and this is where they are? Is that is that reasonable to say that they know where every student is?
So the system will set, will tell us where they're going, where they're supposed to be and in an event of an emergency, then we could check that area to locate those students and make sure that we can account for them if there's if there's some type of incident.
Perfect, thank you.
I can just add to that too, one of the things to remember, we're just really becomes important is if we ever have to evacuate the building or we have a real emergency, we have to move everybody out, that'll give us real time where every child was at that minute. So once we get out, if we're not able to locate a child, we'll be able to go to that system and know where they were immediately.
And that provides the faculty member with their class list or whatever it is so that if they're out in the fire drill, they know who's supposed to be with them and they can just go from there.
Makes the attendance much easier and much more thorough.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we hire six security personnel to go through the halls and the bathrooms. What have they been doing?
They uh they check the bathrooms regularly, ma'am, and we've reinstated logs that they sign of the date, time, uh what the condition of the bathroom is when they enter those bathrooms. Uh we can't see what's happening in stalls though, clearly, and we can't be in cases. So that things are occurring that we're not catching, but that's because of the physical limitations on what's occurring in a bathroom as well.
I think then.
Yes, but the six security personnel that we hired, they're relatively new on board, I'm saying relatively. Previous to that, we had no one.
Okay, they're not.
And this.
Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Their role has been, is currently to check everything out. This system sounds really good, but Dr. Bennett alluded to the incident and we know the incident was somebody came through our schools and got into our schools. So while this is really interesting and it sounds wonderful and you can pay for is even better, uh what about the entrance into our school that if somebody, an intruder, we'll use that terminology, tries to get into the school again, they can possibly do that without the other piece? So where are we on the other piece of making sure that anyone that gets into our school belongs in our school, not from another school or another area?
So I believe Dr. Bennett explained that by saying that's continuing conversation.
And that's still sitting for board to make a decision of what next steps, once you have your presentation for the next vendors and whether you allocate the money and the resources for that.
Dr. Bennett, I sent you two dates.
You just sent me a date, a day before tonight's meeting. You just sent me a date, a day before tonight's meeting saying, can the person come? After we have asked for this since November.
We're at our next meeting.
Okay, and there, and I responded finally to you that they will reach out to the vendors and see if they could be here at the next meeting. But the first time we got a response since November was yesterday and so.
Wait a second, I sent you an email with every single board member's response, what they, what they were choosing, whether they wanted the Smart Pass or not and.
That's Mrs. Lynch's question, her question, her question.
What she's alluding to.
Now, her question is where are we? And, and if you're asking about the entry system, the entry system has been waiting on the two vendors that you all asked to come back in person. And we've been asking every week in the weekly report since November for the date, minute, time that we can reach out to them and to see if they are available. We did not get a response until yesterday. Now.
Aside from all this minutia, I would like to go back into when we had the gentleman in giving us a demonstration. The company was taken over and there was a tremendous amount of total confusion.
Absolutely.
There also was the situation where can we afford the amount of this? That has not been addressed since we have a two points, whatever, a million dollar deficit. Can we take the money from the capital improvement fund, transfer items around? Um, these are things that we have to know and we should know. And while I think this is absolutely wonderful, I have high concerns about somebody just wandering through our buildings without any controls at all. Like the incident that you referred to early on in the meeting.
So again, you were given some dollar values and staffing numbers. The decision was you wanted a much more thorough presentation from two of the vendors. And that was waiting on board reaction with dates and times to do that. We don't have the authority to commit to that. We don't have the funds allocated to commit to that without the board. So that's that issue. Well, that's why, that's the answer to the question. This is a position where we're saying, just because that has not been addressed, I'm not going to ignore this issue that's still happening every day in our building. That was an incident.
No, no, no.
This is an issue.
I am not saying that.
No, I'm saying that this is an issue happening every day in our building. That's what I'm addressing that we can't afford to address.
But I have, I, you're trying to put words in my mouth, sir. Please don't do that.
For me, no, I didn't. I spoke for what I'm saying. I didn't say what you said.
No, okay, so let's, let's do a wrap. Can these vendors now, since they've been taken over, give a correct presentation? Question number one. Question number two, has anyone looked at the budget, the capital fund to see if we can transfer anything? Number three, when can we find this out?
So the answer to your question is this Smart Pass is not the entry system. This company was bought by the Raptor system. That's the answer to your first question. The answer is you can do anything you want with regards to your, not your, if it's allocated for capital, this is not a capital project that you're asking for. But if you want to dip, dip into your general fund, you have that right. But how are you going to sustain it? That's the board's choice, but it's going to be problematic. But we gave you the budget.
That's why we have.
But that's still a board decision. So could you, you absolutely could if you so choose to. That's not our decision as administration.
Oh, I totally understand that, but we do need input from the CFO.
And he provided, that, that's where you got the information from. We, we gave you an estimated cost of what this would be. And it was two to $300,000 range, if I remember, for those entry systems. That's not going to change. In fact, it may go up as you wait.
My, my second uh, question on that is, has our CFO shown us how we could possibly pay for that by moving other things in our capital, slowing them down and insert something like this? I haven't seen that. Have you?
Because this is not a capital project that you're talking about. You keep trying to attach this to a capital issue. This is not, it is a personnel issue to buy more staff. And it is a, if you allocate for the equipment, which recurring costs. And at the time that the presentation was given, we gave you the cost factors of what it would be and talked about building it into the budget process. Well, he couldn't build it into the budget process because you never scheduled the two vendors to come back since November.
Well, since you brought up the Smart Pass, this is the correct time to do the whole, the whole picture.
No, but, but, but because we can afford the Smart Pass, which is addressing a different issue. The entry system, which again was an incident, would by the way, if you remember the report, every other school who we surveyed said they have the same issue at the first week of school. With four, uh, the fourth day this happened with 1,800 kids coming into the building.
Dr. Ben, I'm not doing that. The board members and yourself, if I recall correctly, were very alarmed by this.
Yep.
Yes, it happened in other schools. It could happen again. We don't know that. So all I'm doing is asking a few questions, very simple questions. The Smart Pass is part of the overall picture. It sounds wonderful. You have the money.
It, the Smart Pass is actually can operate independent and address a, a issue that happens daily in the school. Where you're also losing, as we've said, $27,000 you've lost already.
Okay, like I said, it's part of a big picture. I'd like to know the whole picture. Do we have to hire any more individuals with the Smart Pass?
No, you don't. The, the cost is on the blueprint that's there. It is, doesn't have any personal costs associated with it. It is a digital platform. All the cost is at $28,430.
For three years.
And it covers all three years. So $9,377 investment per year to help address a issue.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Hartline?
Okay, so let's bring it back to the, the Smart Pass system here. The, the security officer who checks students in, this will also accompany them. So if a student comes in late, they're going to then get the Smart Pass from the security guard coming, that they're coming in with to go to their whatever classroom they would have to go to.
They already do that when they check in, the security guard who's stationed at the, the door anyway.
But this then creates a log though, and they will be issued the same type of a pass that.
Mr. Hartline, one of the things that comes with this package is um, all the students will get IDs and they will all be virtual. So they'll be able to be on their phone. So when they do come in, they'll be able to show that to the security officer when he comes in, that's correct.
Okay, just so that we have some, you know, so student comes in 15 minutes late, but takes them 15 minutes to get the class and that class is halfway over.
We'll still document it as a later authority, but the pass will be given that way, yes.
And you'll be providing telephones to students who can't afford one?
No, we, they're, they have a system for students who don't have a cell phone that they get a plastic one. Like every, like if there's a issue, they don't have a phone, they can have a plastic one. Some students would probably prefer that. We can give them one.
Okay, Mrs., Mrs. Crossen?
So I just wanted to put out there that um, I support wanting to know where our students are at any time. And, and I also support whatever the funding we would need to make sure that's, um, we have a secure entryway too. I, I think both of those are very important and that had, both of them have my support.
I wanted to, can I just say one thing too? Why, it doesn't solve the entry system issue that we've been addressing. I think we know that. But one of the things, if you recall, when we were notified that there was somebody in our building within a minute and a half, two minutes, we were to locate that student. This will also be able for us to look for IDs now from kids much quicker. Our kids don't carry their IDs right now. So we can, we can ask for them and have them produced very quickly, whether it's by car or by phone.
But it's still not an entry system.
No, it won't be, but there's some potential there.
So if your system shows that there's five girls in the cafeteria bathroom, what do you do about that?
Well, it wouldn't because they wouldn't be able to.
Because today I'm going to tell you, there was four girls in one bathroom stall in the cafeteria bathroom. And an administrator walked in and said, okay, ladies, wrap it up.
Right.
Didn't, this kids did not get in any trouble. Four girls in one stall, what do you think they're doing?
I don't know that.
Yes.
I don't know that.
Because I'm sure you don't because you couldn't go in the ladies room.
Right.
But well, I'm asking if there's, if your system shows four or five girls in the cafeteria bathroom, what do you, what do, what happens then? Does somebody go look?
They would do, they would come out and then like you, Dr. Ben alluded to, we can go into the system to make sure that those students wouldn't be out at the same time anymore after that. So if they try.
But what if they were all just really going to the bathroom?
Then there's not an issue, but if we saw a pattern, this digital system would let us see, oh, they're actually meeting on a regular basis in the bathroom.
And if you have a system that says you can only go to the bathroom for 10 minutes, I don't know where anybody else lives, but sometimes children take longer to go to the bathroom.
That's true. Yeah, and again, as, as the thing Mr. Burns said, we can allot for that time.
You can set the time for, say, if it takes longer for someone to be into the bathroom for specific needs, they can set the time for that student.
That's correct.
So. That sounds like a whole lot of.
If, if I understood everything correctly, you're really only showing that the student left the classroom. You have no idea where the student goes after they leave the classroom.
Unless they're checking in at the nurse's office or.
To that point.
No, the, the bathroom would really be the only incident.
Council office to the nurse's office, the main office, um, that would be absolutely.
But you start being able to document a pattern if they're in the bathroom or gone for a long period of time because it's creating a digital log, check in and out.
Checking all the patterns.
But that, that was going to be my question is.
Well, actually administratively, we can look at it very easily. The teachers can even do that. They'll have access to it as well.
Will security have real time update like, so in the event of a lockdown or a fire drill or whatever have you, security has a real time update that they're able to know these 19 students are, are in the building, but not in a classroom or assigned.
Yes.
Okay, is that mobile to a phone or is that kind of locked to a Chromebook or?
My understanding is any electronic device.
Okay, all right, good. So well, that way too, that if we know that there's an incident that these three students always meet up at, you know, one o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon, they can, security then can get a, a electronic notification saying, hey, look out for this and then maybe, you know, spawn it off.
We can actually prevent them. If we know that, we can actually in this system prevent them from being able to get a pass.
So tell me how this, how does that prevent them from vaping in the bathroom?
Well, again, it doesn't prevent them from vaping in the bathroom.
No, it doesn't.
As Mr. Burns referred to, it seems to be, to your point, three or four girls in a stall. I'm not going to assume that's what was happening, but it would prevent that.
Well, they weren't doing each other's makeup in that stall. Come on.
And I guess I would, I would ask this question. We have the resource allocated from a position that was vacant.
Right, but why don't we save it for something else?
And, but why do we not try something that helps solve a problem?
And annual.
And we have three years to collect data and make an informed decision whether we continue it after that also.
And if we cut down the damages.
Thank you, Mr. Thank.
Hold the vote.
Well, it's on agenda later.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Consideration, thank you.
Dr. Ben, are you completed your presentation? Okay, Mr. Godixon, can we move on?
Okay, we can move on to the approval of the agenda. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 4.1 approves the April 8th, 2025 board agenda as per attached. Are there any corrections that are allowed by PA law?
Second?
Second by Mrs. Crossen, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes nine, nothing. I assume that you're with us, Mrs. Lynch?
She on there? Mrs. Lynch? You see her? I can't even see what's on there.
No.
She's not on the screen, so it's still passing eight, nothing.
Okay, we have two community comments. Does anybody mind if we just do them now and get them out of the way? Okay, um, I'm going to say your name wrong and I apologize ahead of time. The last name is Shum, so Ms. Shum. You have three minutes. And when the three minutes is up, your time's up. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I am here today to address what is currently happening at our Clean Year Middle School. It has come to our, the parents' attention that our Clean Year Middle School will be honoring the Day of Silence, um, supporting the LGBTQ. We have a son who is his second year at Clean Year. And last year he heard about this Day of Silence on the morning announcements and brought this to our attention. We allowed him to stay home from school that day. And when we emailed the school to why he stayed home and questioned about it, we received a phone call from the principal explaining that this was um, not school wide. This was just a club that is promoting, uh, just their club is being promoted and that they're announcing it to other kids if they were interested to know about this. This was not school wide, this was just a school club. This year, us, our school has gained a new pledge, which we have found out to addition, in addition to the Pledge of Allegiance. It's called the Equity Pledge. And all the children are led to say this Equity Pledge every morning, which our kids do not partake in. Also, the small club has seemed to have grown. And now they have signs and posters all over our school walls promoting their Day of Silence. Our kids are being smothered with the pride flag on the walls of the schools promoting this Day of Silence that will be happening on Friday, April 11th. Many of our children have very strong feelings about this and have been tearing down these posters, to which have, they have been punished for, with suspension and detention. My son, knowing that our nation is to display our only one and true flag, which is the American flag, has printed it, has printed the American flag and covered up some of the pride flags on some of the posters. He was called into the office for this. And when he brought this up to the administrations, they said, when he brought this up to the administration, they said that we are a school and we can operate in the system which we want. For such action, he was punished with after school detention. He asked if they can display posters of their beliefs and values on the school walls, and they were denied because they said it would not align with everybody's beliefs. On Monday, him and a few of his friends wore a shirt with a picture of a rainbow and representing the true meaning of it. They were approached by several students throughout the day who were very angry at the shirts that they were wearing. They came at them pointing cannons with threats, cursing at them, saying they wish for them to burn in a fire, die in a plane crash and go kill themselves. When they brought this up to the principals, they felt that the principals were very one sided and not on their side. When they spoke, when I spoke to the vice principal about this, saying that my son was being threatened and now he does not feel going to school, he said they will look into the situation and talk to those children. I have not heard anything since then. My son said that the principal told them that their shirts provoked this kind of behavior towards them from those students. He also got a suspension for the next day because he covered up the uh, flags now with posters because he was told he cannot uh, print American flags. Um, many um.
You just have to wrap it up, I'm sorry.
Uh, many of our children have gotten detention since suspended for it. And I understand that our children are perhaps immature and they voice out their emotions by tearing out the posters on the walls and because they're teenagers and they voice out how they can voice it out in actions. We talked to them and said that this is not the kind of behavior they should be shown in their schools. However, we will never allow our childrens to be silent about their beliefs and values. I don't understand why we're focusing on the efforts on, aren't focusing more on efforts of academics, but on the things that unify rather than promoting division. Our children are being pushed and kept away from education and academics.
Mrs. Shum, we got to wrap it up, I'm sorry.
We feel that our beliefs are, and values are not being valued and our kids being devalued of their beliefs. And we want, if one thing is being promoted and shown on the walls, then our beliefs and values should be promoted on the walls too. Or let's just keep our walls clean and not do anything of this. Let the small club stay a club and believe what they want to believe. And we will say, we'll believe what we will believe and we will pray for the kids of that club.
Thank you. We have to talk to Mike, she's actually.
Mrs. Shum, we have to wrap it up. We only give three minutes, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because we're supposed to decide like everybody, but we try to save your time to.
Each person gets, each person gets three minutes and if you want to speak, you can fill out a green card?
We sign all, we spend like all your time.
Um, well, then that's what would have to happen. Each, each person would get three minutes. I'm not trying to give anybody a hard time. We just have to follow the rules. And the rules are each person gets three minutes. So if you would like to go fill out a green card, you can do that. I have another person ahead of you. So there's still time to go fill out a green card if you'd like to. I'm not trying to keep anybody quiet. No, not, none of us are. But we have to do things in an orderly fashion. in an orderly fashion. Otherwise, it becomes chaos. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Samantha Moser. Last week, my son was disciplined after taking a video of students removing BU posters. These posters featured pride or trans flags, or pride or trans symbols. While I fully support treating everyone with kindness and dignity, I'm here to express my concern over what I see as inconsistencies in how students, how student expression is being handled at Klinger Middle School. My son and many others felt this was disrespectful, and yet, when he respectfully voiced his concerns, he was called into the office. A week later, another student was suspended for wearing a shirt with a Christian message. I'm struggling to understand why identity-based messages are given so much space while expressions of faith or patriotism are treated differently. Public schools should be a neutral ground, a place where all students, regardless of what they believe or how they identify, are treated equally. This isn't about silencing anyone, it's about ensuring that no one's groups' messages take priorities over another, and that students who respectfully express themselves, whether through faith, patriotism, or personal beliefs, are supported and not punished. I respectfully ask the board and the school leadership to review how these situations are being handled and to ensure that policies are applied consistently and fairly across the board. Thank you for your time and service to our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Moser, appreciate that.
I have one more.
Sure. You have, you still have a little more time.
Okay. One moment. President Trump signed an executive order stating that public schools receiving federal funds are putting themselves in jeopardy of losing those funds if they continue with DEI practices. We don't want our school to have to face that. We love our school, our children, and we enjoy attending it. We want our children to feel safe attending our school and not feel that the administration is not supporting their beliefs and values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to both parents, what you, what you just asked for sums up the process, and there are people in this office who you could bring this to, to review, to see if there's something been done. So Dr. Wilson will get your contact information, and we'll go through the process to review to see if there, because first of all, whether it's LGBTQ, whether it's faith-based, whether it's patriotism, all those, what you just said, have the opportunity to be treated equitably in our school system. So if that has been violated, we'll address it. If not, we'll uphold it, but Dr. Wilson, then we'll look into it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President, can you have somebody tell me what an equity pledge is? I've never heard of it, I don't know what it is, and I don't know why we're saying...
I don't know what she's referring to either, but Martin, are you able to speak to it? The principal's right here.
Excuse me?
The principal's right there.
Mr. Hayes, do you have, know what the equity pledge is?
I do.
Is that part of, like, I never heard of that. I've had a lot of kids go to this school district, and I've never heard of it.
All right, good evening. So I'm happy to share the equity pledge with you. In fact, if you give me a moment, I can...
Can I ask where it came from?
Look up and recite it. Yes, it's something that came together from our combined efforts with our, with a student group that was focused on equity in our school for a number of years, and they worked in accordance with our SEAL coordinator over the past couple of years, and put together an equity pledge that is actually something that we have throughout...
Do all the schools have an equity pledge or just Klinger?
I believe, I believe all the elementary and middle schools have it, I'm not sure about the high school.
Dr. Benin, do you know anything about this? McDonald has one that was, it was so inspiring when the kids were saying it.
Dr. Benin, do you know anything about the equity pledge at all the schools?
I have to look into it, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that because I never heard of that.
You can share.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can share what the, what the equity pledge is.
Sure, as long as it's not 10 pages long, we're...
No, it is brief. So the equity pledge is, "I pledge to treat everyone as they would like to be treated. I will be accepting of all people and show them kindness and respect. I pledge to learn other's stories and develop an appreciation for their uniqueness. I am an amazing individual and will treat myself with kindness and positivity."
That's it?
That's it.
I would suggest we stick to the American Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, please.
That's really...
I'm sorry, don't we do the American, don't we do the Pledge of Allegiance?
We do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, okay.
But the, it is nice, but some parents may feel that is for them to teach their children, and we're not doing it in all schools, we should not be doing it in one school.
I, I, I think the question becomes, another question, are you making a student do it? Are they required to participate in it?
No one's required to participate.
So it's by choice?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the first thing, just like you can't no longer make a student do the pledge also.
Middle school kids feel pressured, let's be honest. Middle school kids feel pressured.
Are they bullied, kids who don't want to participate? Are they pressured to participate in this?
In the, in the equity pledge?
Yes. Is this said right after the Pledge of Allegiance, as part of the day, or is it separate?
So it happens immediately after the Pledge of Allegiance? We start the day with KTV as our news crew, and they start, start with the Pledge of Allegiance as the first piece, and then they say, and now we're going to say the equity pledge, and then they recite the equity pledge.
So, so Dr. Benin, can we please find out if every school does this?
I will.
And if it just, did it originate at Klinger?
No, it's not.
The board was totally unaware of it.
Yes, I had no idea, I never heard of it.
I'd like to know the origin of it too, where exactly it comes from.
So I think, so I think, could we find that information out, and then we can deal with it after we get the information?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I mean, that's, that's stuff I tell my own kids.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, and thank you for bringing the situation to our attention. Appreciate it.
Sorry. Is there anybody else with a green card? Okay. Okay, let's move on.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have any items that we want pulled or held back? If not, we're moving all items together?
For six, for six.
Six, yeah, because for the consent agenda.
Can, can we, 6.9C, can we just vote on that separately, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving everything but 6.9C. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1 minutes, 6.1A approves the minutes from the March 11th, 2025 work session, regular school board meeting. 6.1B approves the minutes from the March 25th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting. 6.2 personnel, 6.2A job abandonment, 6.2B retirements, 6.2C resignations, 6.2, 222C resignations, 6.2D leaves of absence, 6.2E chains of status, 6.2F homebound tutor, 6.2G fine arts festival, and 6.2H co-curricular clubs and activities. 6.3 exceptions to policy, we have none. Appointments, 6.4, we have none. 6.5 waivers, we have none. 6.6 conferences and travel, we have none. 6.7 approves, approves the roll-out, roll-in refrigerator quote from Penn Jersey for the refrigerators at William Tenet High School. District cost not to exceed $19,065.28. 6.2B approves the gas convection oven quote to Penn Jersey for the convection oven at William Tenet High School. District cost not to exceed $10,095.28. 6.27C award the roll-in heated cabinet quote to Penn Jersey for one cabinet in William Tenet High School. No. District cost not to exceed $6,607.45. 6.7D awards the insurance broker service, RFP 25-08, to Willis Towers Watson Northeast for a three-year term. District cost is $31,000 for the year 25-26, $32,000 for the year 26-27, and $33,000 for the year 27-28. Assemblies and speakers and programs, we have none. Contracts, licenses, and services, 6.9A approves the homebound, approves the memorandum of understanding with the Bucks County Intermedia Unit, number 22, for the Head Start and Pre-Kingergarten Programs for the year 25-26, of no cost to the district. 6.9B approves the 2025 contract agreement for reevaluation services for student 19-13-19 during transition from early intervention to school-age services at the PA School for the Deaf. Anticipated district cost is $2,127.66. Additional services may be added. We're skipping 6.9C. 6.10 textbooks, we have none. 6.11 acceptance of donations, grants, and requests, we have none. 6.12 changes of, to academic programs, positions, and stipends, we have none. Second. Second by Mr. Ginhardt. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's passing nine, nothing. And then we have the last item here, 6.9C approves the purchase of the Smart Pass Pro Plan or the Smart Standard Plan for the William Tenet High School to address the growing problems of disruptions, disruptive students' movement in schools. Teaching to, leading to safety concerns, property damage, and significant loss of instructional time. District cost not to exceed $30,000 for three years. Second. Second by Mr. Sadowski. Any discussion?
I just also received a message from our nurse coordinator. This is the same product that is used by Archbishop Wood also, and their nurses also use it heavily to check students in and out, to see if they have authorization to come see them.
I have one question.
Oh, Jesus, God. What does that have to do with this?
It's what I'm paying for.
No, not you.
Oh. It just, it states at the top, it's the purchase of the Smart Pass Pro or the Smart Pass Standard, and your presentation was the Pro, so we're definitely buying one or why is it...
They want the Pro, but I wanted to give the board, if there was a concern for money, the flexibility.
Okay.
We found the money, the school has asked for the Pro.
Okay.
So we're running on one of the other...
Is that different?
So, yes, there is a difference in the features and the capability. So the motion would actually read approves the purchase of the Smart Pass Pro Plan for William Tenet High School.
So do we need to change this, we can say just...
You, you would need to...
Yeah, make a motion to amend.
To amend.
6.9C to say, to read purchase of Smart Pass Pro Plan.
Yeah, I'll make that.
Thank you.
There you go. All right.
All right, so we amended the 6.9C to just say the Pro, Smart Pro Service.
Smart Pass Pro.
Smart Pass Pro.
Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to vote on the, the motion to amend.
Yes.
You have a second, so you can just ask for...
Second.
You already got, you got a...
We got it all, you know, here, so, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm voting no.
I'm also voting no.
Abstaining. I am abstaining.
Abstaining, so we have a 6-2-1.
Someone...
For the motion to change the wording?
Favor.
Mrs. Lynch, are you sure you're abstaining?
Yeah, it was just the motion to change the wording, Jane.
Change the wording.
Pardon me, please. Changing the motion, I'm, yes, I don't mean that.
Okay, 7-2.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Okay. So now we can move forward on the motion.
Yes.
All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Abstaining.
So this...
6-2-1.
6-2-1.
I will say why my extension?
Yeah.
Which you're required to have an explanation of why, so I'm going to give it very briefly.
Okay.
It sounds like a wonderful program, but I am looking at the overall picture, and having the overall picture, I think, will make our schools extremely safe, especially the entrance. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, we only have one item. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 7.1, approves the memorandum of understanding between the Centennial School District and the Centennial Education Association to increase the current hourly rate for extended school year services, ESY services, to $50 per hour. This agreement will end on December 31st, 2025. Second. Second by Mr. Ginhardt. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes nine, nothing. Policies?
Okay, moving on to policies, everybody got two policies for initial distribution and discussion. We have one policy for adoption, so I'll just read it. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 8.2A, adopts Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hartline. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries nine, zero.
Mr. Ginhardt, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. The cell phone policy was approved by the Administrative Committee. It should have been on this agenda. Could we make sure that it's on the next agenda? Initially, it was on without the ARs. Dr. Benin did the AR, and now it's complete, and the board should vote on it, wrap it up.
Yeah, the only reason it got pushed back is when we had initially talked about it at the last meeting. We said we would give everybody plenty of time to look at, look at it once it was gone over a second time, so we just didn't want to be jamming it in real fast. We wanted to give everybody a chance to digest it before we vote on it again, so that will be on the next agenda.
Yes, but the administrative meeting was over a week ago, but anyhow, just make sure it's on the next agenda, thank you.
It will be. I mean, just for, does anyone have an objection to Mrs. Lynch's request? Because the board had given the direction to bring it back in May initially, do you have a problem if it's brought back at April 22nd?
No, I'll bring it back.
Yeah, okay. That was the only reason it was held, Ms. Lynch, because of the May conversation at the last meeting. But no one does object, we can put it on the 22nd, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to financials.
All right, there are four items up this evening. Does anybody wish to have any of them pulled? Seeing not, I'll read them all in unison. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedules of bills, investment, cafeteria fund budget reports... the schedules of bills, investment, cafeteria fund budget reports, and general fund cash receipts, summary in March 2025, as per the attached. Approves the 2025 budget transfers from March, as per the attached. Approves the pending bill list, as per the attached. Accepts the pre-approved paid bill list, as per the attached.
Second.
Second by Mr. Godixon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Brancata? On the financials, are you an aye?
You could have just hold on without me.
You were walking in.
Your vote, the financials.
Motion's been made.
Yes.
All right, motion passes nine-zero-zero. Thank you.
Madam President, one... I'll be very brief. I won't go into it, especially what we just heard. But I didn't know if everyone had seen our favorite newspaper, The Thawf Inquirer. On March 30th, had a front-page story about cell phones in schools, and they made aware, which I did not know, that the state had offered schools money to buy the pouches to put the cell phones in, should there be a decision to do that. But that was not something I knew about. I don't know if anybody else knew about it. Very interesting article. A couple of schools that have tried it, the superintendents are very favorably inclined toward it. I will give this to Mrs. Roush. If anybody would like to see it, it's available from Thawf Inquirer.
That's so nice of you.
Thank you.
Not all of us get the paper.
I can do it online.
Good for you.
I can smash it. I can get the old paper.
I'm old-fashioned, too.
Colleen, can you, if it's not a big article, could you scan it or something?
If we're allowed to.
If you're... Or just give us a link to it?
Yeah.
In your spare time.
I'll see if I can find it online, too.
Thank you.
Is there any other board discussion and comments? I just want to say something, and it's totally personal. I wouldn't want that system on my kid's phone. I really wouldn't. I really think it's an intrusion into people's privacy. I do. That's just my personal feeling. But so much for feelings, right? Let's move on. Mr. Hartline?
Hey, we did Fine Arts Week last week, which was outstanding for the music programs, choir, orchestra, jazz band, choir, and bands. Quite a show to see literally 200, 250 students from elementary age all the way up to our high school students performing, hearing the accolades from their teachers on what a wonderful job they did, and some of the accomplishments of several of our students that are graduating this year with receiving awards and scholarships and what have you. The next group coming up, Fine Arts Night, which is our showcase night, May 2nd, and we have Behind the Lens, which is April 30th. I think it was April 30th. All of which just go to show how prolific the arts are here at Centennial.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline, and thank you for your brevity. Please. Anybody else?
Can we just quickly recognize the Power Professionals, the National Power Professional Day? That just happened. And then National Secretary Day is April 23rd. Recognize those hard workers as well.
Absolutely.
Throw in their National Library Week.
There you go.
Yep.
Anything else? Are we sure?
Yeah, because I don't want to get the evil eyes over there.
You see my eyes? They're barely open.
I know.
My kids go, Mom, are your eyes even open?
Pretty sure the thing I'm going to mention is going to come up in a minute on the C E F report.
Okay. Can we go to District Report? Mr. Ginhardt?
Yeah, just real briefly. We had our last meeting, and we voted on the things that came up. Next meeting is April 15th, and just wanted, real quick, so people know, because we talk about policy a lot, how to access policies, you know how they work. Policies are the general framework of how things are run in the district, and then attached to those policies are administrative regulations, which are documents that the superintendent puts in place for the actual implementation of those policies. It's the meat of how they actually work, so if people are wondering why we're talking about policy and the AR, they know what the difference is. And if you ever want to see our policies, they're available on the website. Go to the top right, go to School Board. On the left, you'll have a drop-down that says Board Docs. Go to Board Docs, go to the public site. All of our policies are there. When you bring a policy up, you'll see the policy, and then down at the bottom, there's an attachment for the administrative regulation, which has how that policy is put into place if anybody wants to keep up on the policy since there always coming up.
There was nothing brief about that, Mr. Ginhardt, but thank you. Listen, briefish, okay. Mr. Godixon, briefish, please.
I'm going to make mine very brief because I was not at the last board meeting at the Bucks County IU, but there are words, you know, and concerns out of the IU about the Head Start program. They're usually funded in a five-year cycle, and this cycle is ending at the end of June. So they have not heard any information about what the future is bringing in terms of the Head Start programs. The federal government is consolidating some of their offices on the East Coast, closing in Boston at least one of the offices that are closing. So there is some concern about funding for Head Start.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Grozen.
Okay. I promise I'm not talking about scholarships. That part is over. P S B A, the Morning Brief of April 2nd, W H Y Y, we're talking about the choir and the arts. Let's go into that. Studies show links between art programs and positive academic outcomes. For years, researchers have documented the positive impact of arts programs when it comes to students' self-esteem, well-being, and interpersonal skills and good citizenship. Now, it seems, they also impact overall academic success. In two expansive studies, one in Miami and the other in Los Angeles, researchers followed hundreds of public school students, some who took arts-related or music courses starting in their early grades and others who did not. Their findings showed that the students exposed to the arts-related programs, such as music, demonstrated positive academic outcomes, or improved skill development compared to those who did not participate. So if you're wondering if your kid should be in the arts, absolutely. If you want to read more about this, P S B A, the Morning Brief, was on April 2nd.
Thank you. Mr. Hartline?
All right, this morning, the Centennial Education Foundation had its annual Grants, Awards, and Recognition Program. Mr. Zdowski joined me at the meeting, giving away over $45,000 in mini-grants to nearly 60-some individuals, encompassing a wide variety. I mean, you can go onto the website to see the many, many grants that they give out, and these are all small grants that teachers apply for. Many of them collaborate together. It's a great opportunity for individual programs or what have you within their classrooms, the library programs, the arts programs, sciences, robotics. It's just an outstanding operation. As a matter of fact, Dr. Bennett even was one of the individuals that gave away an award this year in his name. So kudos to all those who have sponsored, and we'll go to the sponsor at this point. If you go to the C E F's website, there is loads of opportunities for involvement, donations, golf outing, whatever have you, so please take the time to do that. Rolling on to Legislative Council.
Oh, wait. What about the pet calendar?
That hasn't been done yet. We're still... We are still on the Disney raffle.
Okay.
Okay, pet calendar has not been done yet, but it was a huge success. We'll be coming back. Start taking photos of your pets to submit, trust me.
Stocking up over here, Mrs. Grozen.
There you go. Okay, it's on.
Penny, please start taking pictures of them.
Yes. Yes, and, you know, don't be shy about posting them online either. Legislative Council, they're still pumping bills out, and they're still going to committee in Harrisburg. We are no closer to a budget than we were last time we met, and once we actually start getting bills that come out of committees and start getting voted on, I'll start bringing them forward.
Thank you, Mr....
Thank you, Mr. Hartline.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ginhardt?
Yeah, Middle Buck, the only thing that Quinn didn't cover is I'd like to congratulate James Hamavitz, the welding instructor at M B I T. This is National Welding Month, and the American Welding Society awarded Mr. Hamavitz the A W S Section Educator Award for Excellence in Teaching Welding. So congratulations to great teachers at M B I T, which is a great school for teaching the trades.
Thank you. Communications, I have none. I think we've said it all. Additional community comments? There's none. Schedule of board meetings, calendar of events? Mr. Ginhardt?
Tuesday, April 15th, 7:00 p.m., B C I U Board Meeting at B C I U. April 17th to 21st, all schools and offices closed for spring break. Monday, April 28th, 5:30 p.m., M B I T Committee of the Whole at M B I T. Tuesday, almost done. Tuesday, April 29th, 7:00 p.m., Committee of the Whole in the boardroom. Tuesday, May 6th, 5:30, M B I T Executive Council at M B I T. Tuesday, May 13th, 7:00 p.m., Work Session, Regular Board Meeting in the boardroom.
Motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.